Okay. Thank you for waiting for us. We were in executive session. We're back now. I do want to just make mention that Ms. Crenshaw is out of town because she's traveling on business, so that's why she's not here tonight. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion, we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I know I have one thing I definitely want to talk about, and that is I would like to thank Dr. Gould for all of her service to our district. I'm sorry to see her go, but I know this is a wonderful opportunity for her to be a superintendent in another district, and we're always proud when our folks move on to bigger and better roles, and so I wish you well, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We will miss you.
Yeah, I really cannot imagine anyone as better qualified and better prepared to take over the big chair as you, and I wish you the very, very best.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
The Stowe Monroe Falls community is so lucky to have you as their leader. Your service to our district has been steadfast, impactful, focused, collaborative, celebratory. I want to thank you for being a mentor to me as I came into the position into Tiger Nation, learning the ins and outs. But also just your partnership across many challenges, but also many wonderful things too as well. This year in particular, thank you for shepherding a pretty new high school administrative team and really being intentional in developing their leadership lens and their work. It will be a forever imprint on who they become as leaders, so I thank you for that. I will still be calling you. I will still be texting you.
No problem. Thank you.
And once a tiger, always a tiger.
Yeah.
Right.
Just so you know.
I just have to put my shirt on up under that other shirt.
What's the new mascot?
Bulldogs.
Tigers are better.
Tigers call that lunch.
Tigers are way better.
Whatever. And I also want to acknowledge Jackie Taylor's service to our district as well, elementary principal at Oxford, and that's another person we're really going to miss in our district who's, you know, made a big impact.
Jackie has spent just about all her career in CHUH in multiple roles, and has been impactful in each and every one of those. And we're excited that she has an opportunity to work closer to home, but she will be sorely missed, and also will be getting phone calls and text messages.
Yeah, and I don't think it's lost on anybody in the room that we've got the turnover of three Northside School principals this year, so any support that, you know, the district can continue to infuse into the new lifeblood coming in and, you know, hitting the ground running, I think is definitely going to be vital this upcoming year.
I agree.
You know, it's one of those things, though, that it's a very well-disguised blessing, because we are having our people poached, not poached, we're having our people grow to play on bigger stages, and I think that that, I know that that is a draw to this district, because people see, you know, it's like, you know, people get elevated. CHUH has been able to spot a ton of incredible talent and help that talent grow, and sometimes that means move on, and that's fine, because we're here about educating kids. And if we can help people really excel in that and then take that elsewhere and help educate kids elsewhere, fantastic.
And it's part of the secret plot for Cleveland Heights University, Heights City Schools to conquer the universe, so.
That's right.
Send people out everywhere.
Tiger Nation has no set boundaries.
Correct. So is there any other discussion?
No.
And if not, Mr. Gaynor, will you take the role?
Mr. Heitz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. And so the next item on our agenda is, let me scroll all the way down here.
Can I make a statement before we go there?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So I want to thank the board for approving the consent agenda and the new coordinator of curriculum and instruction, Amanda Zappalteknie, who is here.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome.
Please stand. Mrs. Zappalteknie brings a wealth of experience in educational leadership and a passion for enhancing learning experiences. She most recently served as the principal of Liberty Elementary School in North Ridgeville, where in just two years she has strengthened the TBT and BLT processes, enhancing teacher collaboration, and through PBIS has improved student behavior and wellness. Her strong utilization of data has become a model that North Ridgeville's district follows. As an instructional leader, Mrs. Zappalteknie has a background in instruction and has facilitated various professional development for K-8 writing initiatives and mathematics using the Common Core standards. Her educational philosophy is rooted in fostering a supportive environment where both instructors and students thrive. She is dedicated to promoting inclusive practices that cater to diverse learning styles and needs while ensuring every student receives a high-quality education. So again, please welcome, please join me in welcoming Amanda Zappalteknie to the CHUH Board of Education family as our new coordinator of curriculum and instruction. We are excited about the energy and expertise she brings to our team and look forward to the positive impacts she will undoubtedly make in advancing educational outcomes across our district.
Welcome to Tiger Nation, and once again, once a tiger, always a tiger, just so you know.
Like the mafia.
There will be a tattoo session sometime soon, right?
The temporary tattoos, okay.
Sold some stickers, right?
So the next item on our agenda is the work session, so that is semester two data.
So I will turn this now over to Dr. Gould and her team to take us through this data. In particular, we are focusing on the available finalized data that we have that available for staff, so turning it over.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you for the warm thoughts and wishes. Like you said, Tiger Nation will always be near and dear to my heart. Also, good evening to the board members, Superintendent Kirby, Scott Gaynor. This evening, we have the honor of sharing the Ed Services second semester update. We're going to look at a few academic things, but the majority of the presentation will be around climate on this evening. With me this evening to share are the following leaders, Allison Byrd, Director of Research and Assessment, Bob Swagert, Director of Curriculum, College and Career Readiness, I almost gave you that old job back, Bob, I'm sorry. Rachel Coleman, Director of Principal Leadership, and Paul Racinco had an emergency, so we will present his information on this evening. We always start our presentations with our mission, and our schools provide a challenging and engaging education to prepare all of our students to become responsible citizens, succeed in college and career. And the items that we will go over tonight will definitely show you how we're looking for our students to succeed in college and career. The goals for the presentation on this evening are to review the root cause analysis work conducted on climate for both our elementary and secondary schools. This work was completed last year in 2023. The secondary root cause was done first, and then the elementary root cause followed after that. From the root cause, there was a determination by the cabinet to create a theory of action and create a key performance indicator goal. We will have each department present their specific action steps in the areas of data and assessment, college and career readiness, principal leadership, and from student services. We'll look at the collaborative efforts and look at professional learning initiatives that will derive from the work, as well as discuss the data and how it has driven the decision-making that we look at in the district, and then we'll share our progress and future steps from each department. As we reflect back on the root cause analysis, I have provided information in the packets for board members to review. We want to look at who the committees were, what was the task for the committee. We want to look at the consensus process that was used, look at some underlying causes and sources, proposed solutions, and next steps from the root cause analysis. A root cause analysis is a systemic process to identify fundamental underlying causes of a problem or an issue. The goal is to determine what happened, why it happened, and what can be done to prevent it from happening again. And I know you can read this because it is so large. We have our committee members, and we just wanted to see that we had a variety of people who sat on our committee. Gabe says she can't hear anything.
Looks like she has her, no, I can't tell.
I can call her and just put a, she can see, right? I can call her and just have the phone.
So we wanted everyone to see that we had a variety of individuals, not just people from internally, but the people who were partnerships with us, parents, as well as classify and our certified staff who served on the committee. The task of the committee was to identify an underlying cause or identify the problem. We wanted to provide data that was collected that was relevant to the problem. We wanted to identify issues that contribute to the problem and look at all the potential factors and do some causal factor charting to identify the root cause and make some recommended solutions. And you can see that is identified in step one, two, three, and four. So here is the problem that was identified for both the elementary and for the secondary schools. It was to look at the 2018-2019 school year through 22-23. It was regarding school environment and showing an increase in the student code of conduct violations as it related to pre-fighting, fighting mutual combat, and intimidation, bullying, harassment. And so we provided a definition for the committee members that was strictly from our student code of conduct, so that we had a universal definition that everyone could relate to. From there, there we looked at contributing issues. From the elementary, there were 168 contributing issues. From the secondary schools, there were 102 issues that were identified that led to these three groups. In group one, you can see the contributing issues there, group two, and group three, and we tried to actually categorize them. From there, we identified three root causes. We wanted to look at community partnerships and wraparound services to offer support services and resources geared towards social-emotional needs for students. In root cause two, we wanted to look at our staff not being trained in areas like conflict resolution, de-escalation techniques or strategies, and all students are not taught these particular skills as well. And then three, we looked at PBIS is not fully executed or implemented with fidelity across all of our schools throughout our system. From each one of the root causes, you can see proposed solutions for those. There were 14 related to community partnership and wraparound services. There were a total of six proposed solutions related to conflict resolution and de-escalation techniques. And for the last root cause of PBIS not being executed or implemented fully, there were a total of 14 proposed solutions. The cabinet leaders then reviewed and reflected on the possible solutions and recommendations. From this root cause work, a climate goal was created and outlined the work for each of the cabinet leader's department. Many of the, although many of them are part of Ed Services, each department still took on this KPI goal. And the KPI goal is here. It says, increase support services to staff, enabling them to support the behavioral needs of the students, resulting in fewer infractions that lead to out-of-school suspensions by 15% each year for three years. So each department, each cabinet leader, had to take on this particular goal and talk about how their work fit in this particular category. So now you'll be able to hear from each of our leaders, and they will share the KPI goal and the work that was part of their action steps and theory of action for this work. And I'll turn it over now to Allison Byrd.
Thank you. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you put the microphone a little closer? A little closer? Yeah, thank you. How's that? Better? All right, so as the Director of Data Research and Assessment for the district, when we think about my role in supporting the district climate goal, I provide the data and the research. So my action steps, there are basically three. So one is to identify what the needs are for each one of the departments, train staff, and adjust any outputs as needed. So if they find that there are new fields or information that needs to be created in one of our information systems, including Infinite Campus, which is the one that you see listed, then that is how I am supporting the work of the team. On the next slide, you'll see an example of some of the data that we share, because there, it's typically quite heavy when we think about PBIS. We think about climate and discipline, but we know that there are other components of positive behavior supports, and one of them is attendance. So here, we're taking a look at our district attendance rate over the last five years. It is reported on the state report card, but is not one of the, like, one of the measured indicators. It is a leading indicator, however, for our district strategic plan. So you can see for school year '23-'24, preliminary findings show our attendance rate at 89.1%, which is a slight uptick from what we have seen or what we saw last year.
Allison, can I ask a question about this real quick?
Of course.
Because I know the year 2019-20, people might forget that that was the COVID year, so therefore, the number's a little skewed there because the state, you know, counted more, there was something with attendance.
Spring semester, right? Everybody was basically counted.
Yes.
Present.
Correct. So from March 16th.
When they were sent home.
For the, through the end of the year, we were directed by the state to identify all students as present, so that's why you see that higher output for the 1920 school year. And again, because it's just a five-year trend, we can't see what it was before that.
Well, that's what was my next question was, are we close to where we were before that? If you're going five years previous to the 2019-20, are we tracking about where we were before?
That's a good ask. Let's get that data.
No problem.
I'll grab that for you. I'd rather actually look at the numbers than.
Sure, sure, sure. It's just when I looked at this, I was kind of like, well, I know there, I know there's a weird uptick because of how it was reported in 1920, but I'm kind of wondering where were we before the COVID and then, so if you can get that to us at a later date.
They also had, due to COVID, and as COVID became better understood and the different strands, if you will, of COVID came and went, the implications of a student getting COVID changed on their attendance.
Yes.
Because they, I think in the early days, you had to be out 10 days.
Yeah, yes, right.
And so right, right then, if you get COVID, you're chronically absent.
Right.
And then it went to five days.
And then there was the question of the other students in the same classroom who might have been exposed also had to go home to isolate. So.
Right.
I mean, everybody's numbers were affected by COVID in weird ways.
Just a great time for the state to start caring about student attendance.
Well, you're helping me transition to our next slide, which is actually is all about chronic absenteeism. So this one is a measured indicator on our state report card as part of the gap-closing component. And again, while these values are not official, preliminary data indicates that we have improved our district chronic absenteeism rate going from 39% to 37%. And as you pointed out, right, so we want this value to be a stair step down, where with attendance, we want it to, the attendance rate, we want it to go the other direction. Some of what you shared about attendance types and the codes and what questions that we're asking of families as to why their kiddos are out have helped us to improve our internal practices and be really much more clear about the different supports and interventions that families need in our efforts to improve their attendance rates.
Have we gotten any, on the absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, have we gotten any anecdotal information back from families about the nudges that we did this year with text messages and things like that?
I got some back too from just principals and help me if you can remember.
Everyday lives.
Yeah. Yeah, so it helps probably more so elementary and maybe middle school, not sure with high school as much. So we're thinking through if that's something we will continue, because there are some toolkits out there where districts can do it themselves that we want to investigate to see if now we've done it two years, if it's something we can manage.
Yeah. Olivia got a upper respiratory thing earlier in the year, and we got the text message. We got the nudge.
To come back.
I did get.
As soon as you're healthy.
I did get a comment from one parent whose kid was, I believe, in the high school, who felt it was a little excessive. The nudges were excessive.
I'd rather air that way than the other.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but I only heard from one parent specifically.
Right, and all part of the process in trying to find out, like, the right amount of communication, making sure it's at a level where people can connect with it and understand it, and most importantly, like, to even get some kind of communication back, whether they liked it or did not like it. We know that they have a better understanding of where their children are, and so we'll see that as a positive to Dan's point. Here, we're taking a look at the district climate goal. So Dr. Gould shared that we had a collective goal to increase supports and services to staff, to support the behavioral needs of students, in an effort to decrease incidents that led to out-of-school suspension by at least 15%. So I wish I had a little asterisk there. And our effort to remove the acronym, because normally we'll talk about it as OSS, it's spelled out out-of-school suspension, but it's really important to note that this is any removal from school. Because we didn't want, was the, any implication or thought that, well, we might have suspended for a certain behavior, and now we're using, say, another code, like, emergency removal to maybe hide practices. So again, this includes any removal from school, so that would be emergency removal, suspension, expulsion, or even our alternative to expulsion. So when you're looking at the graphic, you can see the number of students who were involved in incidents that led to out-of-school removal and the total number of incidents themselves. And then in '23-'24, you can see there were 682 students involved in 870 incidents. And so that is a 20.9% reduction in the number of incidents leading to out-of-school removals. So we have met that goal to decrease the overall number of incidents.
One data point that I'd be interested in the future maybe in seeing is, do we have, like, in the kind of 80-20 rule thing, like, do we, are there a small number of students who are having a lot of out-of-school suspension time, or more, multiple incidents versus a one-off kiddo, but a kid who's, you know, having three or four or five a year that is, you know, that we could target, I don't want to say frequent flyers, but people who are experiencing that more often.
That is a term, and yes. So our school leaders and the leadership team members and staff do have access to that. It's actually embedded into our student information system, so they can see the number of incidents resulting in out-of-school suspension or out-of-school removal, in-school removal, and they, the number, the frequency, so they can look at it by date, they can, again, look at it by count or type of infraction that the student was referred for. So we do have the ability to drill down on that, again, at the school and grade level.
Because presumably, that's a population of students who are in greater need of support, social-emotional learning, PBIS, counseling, social worker, whatever it is, right? I mean, there's something going on if a student is involved repeatedly in behavioral problems.
Definitely.
And discipline issues, so.
Definitely. And that's why when we think about, like, we spend a lot of time in working on the district goal to not just focus on the number, but to have an understanding about what supports and services were needed to change the behavior.
Right.
Right? Because we know that, I mean, we're talking about children, so there are multiple factors that go into their decision-making and why they have some of the behavior that they display. So again, it's not just about cutting the number down, but increasing those supports and services, because we know that when we do that, it will result in better behavior, better attendance, better academic output.
Thank you.
So then in closing, from my department, we see my next steps, and it's pretty cyclical. So again, we'll continue to identify the different needs of the departments, provide training as things are adjusted. And another level of work that Dr. Gould and I have been working on the last couple of years is structured and frequent meetings with the school teams to not just look at the data, but discuss the ways in which they are using that to inform their practice and make different decisions. So that will continue.
Thank you.
Allison, are those students duplicated, or are those unduplicated students?
Those represent distinct students, so one student may be involved in more than one of the incidents that are listed there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just doing some quick math off the top of my head, so 682 students would roughly be 14, 13, 14% of our population.
Again, it's why the framing of that goal is so important, because it's not just about cutting down the numbers, and it's, their, kids are telling us different things about the need to be engaged and, like, right, they need additional services, and so it's exciting to see the work that the schools are doing. And so it's exciting to see the work that the schools are doing to have an impact on that number because it's not just less referrals or less removals. It's really shifting the behavior.
Good.
Good. So just as a way to connect to the college and career piece, think of this as kind of a cafeteria line and we are moving the student down the line. So we're just going to continue to go. And I think it's really important for us to connect those dots because we talk about how do we get to root cause? We talked about attendance and how important it is for students to be here as many days as possible. We talk about behavior infractions and what does it look like for students to make sure that they're part of our community and feeling like they are engaged? And I think that the college and career readiness piece is, so how do I, as college and career department, how do we decrease that out-of-school suspension? How do we, how do we contribute to that? And the answer is, we do it through engagement. We do it in terms of how you can see yourself, like where are you going? How can we help you get there? And so a lot of this in my component is really related back to how can we get kids thinking about their future? So my two goals specifically are implement the PACE framework. And PACE, again, just as a quick acronym, is planning and career exploration. That is through the GCCC partnership, which is the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium partnership. PACE has been implemented in Cleveland for probably the last five years, I believe. And so as part of this bigger ecosystem, it wasn't just about opportunities for students in Cleveland. It was opportunities for students in all of Northeast Ohio to connect to the businesses, the internships, the professionals that are working in all different parts of Cleveland and really spreading that across all Northeast Ohio. So the PACE framework is a list of activities that students really are working towards in order to understand who are they, what are their interests, what are their aptitudes? Where do they want to go? How do they get there? And really get a chance to connect with many professionals. So this is spelled out in grade six through twelve. I know that that doesn't necessarily backwards map all the way to fifth grade just yet. But I also know that our school counselors in the elementary schools are doing a lot to try and contribute to that awareness that elementary students have. So even though the PACE framework doesn't dip down to fifth grade, I work specifically with those elementary school counselors to think about how do we create those opportunities for students to connect with the opportunities? So my action stops the PACE framework and then also the students that have not completed PACE activities, maybe because of some discipline referrals or maybe even because they're missing a lot of school. Where do we get that into that tier-two framework? So our college access advisors, our trio program, our gear up program, even engaging our ALC and our ALE teachers. So students are getting disciplined for something that they're still not missing this idea of how to be engaged in planning for your future. So it's really trying to connect all the dots there. So when you think about that pace, we've got these career readiness activities and there's three components. There's awareness, there's exposure, and there's experiences. You're going to see that listed out on one of the, the future slides. But I want to plant that seed because all three of those things are really critical when you're thinking about K through twelve, awareness, exposure, and experiences. So let's take a look at how the PACE framework actually, what results did it produce for the class of two thousand twenty-four? So some of the things that we look at is, so based on exit survey, what did students say? Where are they? Where are they going? What's their plan? So we were able to collect information from three hundred and eighteen seniors, which was pretty close to the number that walked across the stage with you guys.
That's almost everybody.
It was almost everybody. And we know that we still have some students that are in summer school. So we're going to continue to try and, you know, have them as they get ready to complete. Then we're going to get some exit survey data from them. We have about thirty students, seniors, that we're targeting for that. We probably have about fifteen students that are actively participating. Some of them have been resolved to the fact that they might want to move forward with the fifth year. And there's a lot of circumstances as to why that, that is an appropriate response for the student and the family. But we're still working our hardest to try and get them engaged. So those three hundred and eighteen seniors who completed the survey, we had fifty-four percent of them, almost fifty-five percent, plan to attend a four-year college. We have twelve percent plan to enroll in a trade, technical, or business training program. Some of them might even be able to condense with that next one, which is nine percent plan to attend a two-year college. Some of the students are thinking about pursuing those options at Tri-C, which has a lot of career technical education programs and job training programs. We have got, about nine percent are undecided about what they're going to do after high school. So we had twenty-eight students that still weren't sure. Eight percent plan to be employed. And then we have two percent roughly serving in the military and similarly around five students that plan to take a gap year. And there's a lot of different things of what gap year means for students. Everything from, I don't have a plan, to I plan to work, to I plan to stay on my parents' couch until they catch on to me. So I think that some of that is just trying to help students really articulate. And they have a plan, but they're not sure about, do I really want that plan? Do I really want to do something different? So that's a little bit of the data that we've been able to collect just on the exit survey. We also can go back and look at a couple of different reports that give us a glimpse as to how things are going. This chart that is on this page is actually from the class of two thousand twenty-three and it comes from the National Student Clearinghouse, which is a report of how well did students enroll in college, either immediately after graduation in the fall or anytime in the year after they graduated from high school. So we actually rose, initially, we had one hundred and ninety-one out of the three hundred and seventy-six students, or fifty-one percent of students in the two thousand twenty-three cohort that enrolled in the fall immediately after high school graduation. So that was pretty good. That actually was an increase from two thousand twenty-two. But then we measured that continue over the course of this year and we see that we even gained another eleven students that enrolled sometime in the first year after. And some of that is because through our gear up grant, we've been able to continue to follow up with students even after they graduated. So there's a gear up advisor who's been making phone calls, who's been pestering kids, who's like, are you ready to go back now? Can we help you with the FAFSA? And some of that is students were even planning to transfer. And with the help of their gear up advisor, they actually were successfully transferred instead of just saying, I'll just take this semester off and I'll start back up next year. So just some of that gentle, we, we talked about nudges in terms of those attendance calls, but even nudges in terms of what's your plan, where are you going? How are we going to help you? We had some students that went to run track, for example, at college and realized that the track program wasn't the fit. And so some of them were like, we're done. I dropped out of that school, but I was able to transfer over to another school with the help of that advisor. So I think that those are pretty good numbers. They're an increase and for us to be up near fifty-four percent of that two thousand twenty-three cohort, that's a promising number and it's headed in the right direction. When we look at the FAFSA completion, which this is actual data from right now, earlier in June and also does a little comparison to last year. So we will see that right now, we're about in the middle of the pack. There are twenty-four districts in Cuyahoga County and the Ohio FAFSA data portal will give us some information about where do we stack up compared to the rest of those districts. So right now, we are ranking twelve out of twenty-four with a fifty-two percent completion rate on FAFSA with the students coming out of the two thousand twenty-four cohort. So I know it's really tiny and I'll just give you a couple of the, the rundown. So you will see that, just as an example, Strongsville City School is number five. Westlake is number eight. Fairview Park is number nine. Brooklyn City Schools is ten. Chagrin Falls, eleven. Cleveland Heights, twelve. And then you've got Cleveland Municipal, thirteen, and Lakewood, I think is tied for thirteen. So, you know, it kind of tells us, based on the size and the demographic of our school, like we're doing, you know, pretty, or at least as well as some of the other districts that might be compared to us. And I think that that number really is an indicator of how well we've been able to talk to students and families about completing their FAFSA.
Bob, can I jump in real quick?
Sure, of course.
I would love to see a map like that, but in our own district. I would like to see a geographic representation of where we are thick and where we are thin of FAFSA completion.
In terms of residents?
Yeah.
Where the students live?
Like a home elementary school area?
I would also really like to know, are there, you know, is this, are the students that we're missing, is there a racial piece? Is there a socioeconomic piece? I just think that, I mean, I, I'm thrilled that we're, okay, I'm, I'm accepting that we're, we're right in the middle of the pack. But I'm just drawn to knowing more. Because our goal, right, is to get kids off to college and success. You know, with the other two E's, of course, but mostly enrollment, right? And, and FAFSA, to me, is a really strong measure on whether or not kids and what, what students intent really is versus saying all the right words to us when we're asking them. The FAFSA is a really good measure. It's a check or an ax. So anything more that we can drill down to, I, I would love to see.
Got some Bob questions too, but I can wait till the end of.
No.
You can keep going.
Yeah, that sounds good. That way I can get through, at least talk a little bit more about where we are. So the FAFSA for this school year has not closed the window for applications. So we are still working on reaching out to families. This next slide does talk about like our current status. So we have a hundred and seventy-five completed. So this kind of, the students have cleared through the portal. We have seven that are incomplete. And some of that could be that it's missing a student signature, it's missing a parent's signature, they just need to go in and confirm something. So those seven should move quickly to the, the completed status. And then there's a hundred and sixty-eight students that we don't have a FAFSA on file for right now, that they're sitting out there. Some of them, even as we've compared that to the exit survey, we are able to look at the student is planning to go to college, but they haven't completed the FAFSA. Now, some of that is a very explicit decision by the family, like we're not completing it. So before we really say like, well, we want everybody to do it, some of it is like, we just want to know, right? And even if you say, yes, we've opted out of it, like I'd like for us to then say, great, the family has made that decision to opt out of completing the FAFSA and be able to report that as part of our efforts. So this is the, the students that we're reaching out to right now, trying to say you have until June thirtieth in order to finish that application. You can still go in and amend it up until September. So if, if even something's not correct or you need to make an adjustment to it, you can still, but you've got to get your application in. It's got to be in there, ready to go by June thirtieth in order to be eligible for that federal aid. And, and why just have the opportunity, just so people sometimes get confused about this. Even programs like work-study at a college, getting college aid, all depends on you completing the FAFSA. So it's not like this is just federal dollars.
Can I make a correction to that?
Get her on the microphone.
Yep.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Oh, she can't hear. You got it unmute.
I'm trying.
Well, she, she can hear us.
But she's trying.
But she's trying to talk and she's not on the phone anymore.
I didn't, I don't see it.
There she is.
Oh, I think I'm a little delayed.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So I put it in the, in.
She can't hear you because you're on, we're on mute.
Yeah.
The June thirtieth date is for twenty-three, twenty-four. FAFSA students can still complete twenty-four, twenty-five. FAFSA passed June thirtieth for fall twenty-four.
Okay, so she's giving you a correction on that.
Okay, go ahead, Gabe. Go ahead.
Sorry. So the June thirtieth date is for the twenty-three, twenty-four FAFSA, which is for the current academic year. So students still can complete the FAFSA.
After June thirtieth. After June thirtieth?
We've got all sorts of versions of the meeting happening in the background.
Yeah, we, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so the June thirtieth date is for the twenty-three, twenty-four FAFSA, which is for this current academic year. So students can, and their families can still complete the twenty-four, twenty-five FAFSA until next June thirtieth, which is the one that will be used for the fall semester. So we still have some time for students to complete the FAFSA for the fall semester.
Thank you.
The most important is just to get that FAFSA completed is when that's what we'll continue to work on. Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Krantz.
Can't be too early.
You cannot.
And once you get it done the first time, it's so much easier from there on in.
And this, and this, just to put it in context too, you know, this year, there's been a lot of challenges with the FAFSA and there was the delayed rollout. It was supposed to open on January first or really prior to January first. So there was a lot of things in the media too, which I think scared some families away about like, this is really complicated. But it's still time. It's still time right now to, to make those moves, to get things complete and be ready for that next step.
And I would encourage all parents, if you have a child who is going to be a senior or even a junior, go to the meeting that, you know, Bob's team has on the FAFSA. That meeting was very helpful when I attended it when my son was a senior. And if I'd known, I probably would have attended it when he was a junior just to be prepared. But even, you know, little things like, don't use your student email because you're going, you're going to have to have this same email for the next four or five years. You know, I mean, so even little things like that, I could see where if you sit down to do this and you don't have some of that information that you guys provided, it would be very, very challenging.
Great advice. And we will hopefully get back on the normal schedule of the FAFSA opening up in the fall, not waiting until the winter. And then we will still have those FAFSA nights. So if senior parents or junior parents are thinking about it, we usually schedule those for October at the high school and the mini auditorium. So we will make sure that those dates get publicized so people can really start the process early. So the last slide that I've got is really talks about like this college and career readiness next steps. And so as I had said earlier, awareness, exposure, and experiences. And again, that runs K through twelve. So this is a slide that I actually used when we were doing our BLT retreats, getting a chance to have all the schools, whether they're elementary, middle, or high school, think about these three frames, awareness, exposure, and experiences. And there's a lot of things that we can do to increase the day-to-day habits of college and career readiness that is not just that one-off of, great, we took a big field trip and we went to Tri-C. Yes, we want to have that experience, but that's not the only experience. The more important experiences are those day-to-day experiences where students start thinking about things like classroom jobs and roles, where it's important for me to be the classroom greeter or my teacher turns to me and says, would you please set the timer for three minutes and monitor that? Building lessons with the, the career in mind before you actually start teaching it. So have a guest speaker and then connect to the kind of writing that you're requiring students to do or then have a reading that is based off of that career field. So there's a lot of different things. The career glossary is here. The PACE framework is a live link, so people can take a look at that and see what that looks like as it builds from six to twelve. And then, of course, we have those experiences, which mainly, the piece that we want to continue to work on and where I can continue to get better with this, is we need to foster the parent and guardian aspirations. And this is about, we do a lot with direct service to students, but students don't go without parents. And what we need to do is start thinking about that college and career literacy for families. How can you reinforce this? How can you start this at an earlier age? Even some of the previous research that we looked at is, you know, parents have got to have a thought and a plan for post-secondary options by the time the student's in sixth grade to have the likelihood that it's going to take place. So that's really the work that is deeper than what we do directly with students each day is how do we build that capacity of parents to know that, you know, FAFSA is coming in their senior year, but if that, the first time you're hearing it is in your junior and senior year, you might miss it. So how do we build that in, starting in sixth and even fifth and fourth grades?
Bob, I'll be, I'll be quick with mine. The exit survey, do you, do we know who those kids are who took? Do we know, we, we can tie the response to the kid?
Correct.
Oh, awesome. Because I, I think of all of Allison's data and that. And like, when I see the seven-point-nine percent plan to be employed part or full-time, the first thing, I circle that because the first thing I thought was like, how many of those are, are CTE kids that are leaving that program ready for a job, you know, this summer? So, yeah, I think there's, there's a whole world of cross-tab data between that and Allison's data. That's the key to the kingdom, is knowing who did the survey.
Exactly. And it's kind of like, even with the FAFSA piece, it's one thing if we don't have a response for you. It's one thing if you choose not to respond. So it's like, are we really going after you or because you want help or you need help? And some of the students, even in the exit survey, had indicated, I just haven't completed it yet. It's great, you're my first calls. So these are the students that we want to reach out to because I just haven't gotten around to it. So it's like, well, now it's time to get around to it. So here we go.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
So, good evening, everybody. This is a really good segue because some of the questions that you asked about how we're supporting students who tend to pop up multiple times in our climate data, I can kind of give you the answers for those. So one of my tasks from Ms. Kirby was to make sure that there's some type of transition in place for our middle school students, so fifth graders going into middle school. That would be consistent at both schools. I've been the principal at Roxmead and I know it's frustrating for parents when you hear, oh, this school is doing this and this school is doing something different. So that was part of the job this year to make sure that they were consistent. But also our eighth graders going into ninth grade. And so we had a couple of meetings and I'll explain that process to you of how we put things in place so that we could be clear about what we are doing. So the end of the year structures, and this is kind of going to go a little bit backwards. So we're talking about right now, what we've done. We have end-of-the-year protocol-driven meetings with the elementary, middle and high school teams. I put a live example link in there just for the protocol. I did not put the actual notes because they do mention some of the students that you actually asked about. So if you want to go ahead and look at the protocol, I'll explain it. These are sixty-minute meetings and it is very protocol-driven. So you see that there are time slots there. It's on purpose because we, again, this is happening at the end of the meeting while the teachers are having their planned time. And so at these meetings, you have your counselor, your social worker, any support staff that you can think about that would be supporting students throughout the year. We have a listening session. And so this one happened to be Roxmead and Garrity. And the feeder school actually lists some of the students that you talked about. Well, we just don't talk about high flyer students. It could also be students who are just very anxious about going over into the middle school. Sometimes we lose those families because we're not addressing that right away. So with this document, we're able to list who those students are because in elementary, they've been in those schools longer and the parents are more open to saying, my kid is terrified to go into the middle school. And so with this in place, we're able to actually reach out to those families, do some tours while school is going on, while school is out, have the kid walk the building to get comfortable, have the parent meet the principal so that they can also be more comfortable. So you can tell some of the things that we asked them about. We also do interventions, who's on academic interventions, who's on behavior success plans. So some of the data that you asked about earlier. Our deans of students are actually doing virtual meetings and home visits around attendance and those students who continue to need support. Just because the last day of school has occurred does not mean that we stop supporting our students. So we have this document for every elementary school. The middle schools now have it. And then they will already start to put plans in place to support those students. So down to attendance, down to behavior. Or, you know, my kid is anxious, maybe my student has a five oh four IEP, a one oh one eight. We want to make sure that we're wrapping all our supports around people to make sure that they understand that every time you transition in Cleveland Heights University Heights that we're prepared for you. This is also happening for our eighth graders to ninth graders. And I'm very happy to talk about Ms. Perry. She is very ambitious and putting in some really good plans for eighth grade to ninth grade support. So I'll talk about those quickly. Again, I do want to just say to Dr. Gu because she's leaving, it's been really nice working with her with that high school transition because when we meet with our deans, we're able to talk about the summer structures, which is what I'm going to talk about now. So we take those documents that we have and then we start to plan out who's going where, who's going to be contacting parents. Our deans did tell us last year that when they were doing home visits, some parents were like, that's a little aggressive, how about we do a virtual call? And so we totally respected that. So we do virtual calls and we get a lot, a lot more parents that are willing to meet virtually. One thing that the deans did say though, that they want to do the home visits for is students who have lost family members.
Right.
Sometimes for a child to greet is very different. And so they want to make sure that they're connecting with those students right away. That was something that they said they absolutely wanted to keep up with this year. And so we have protocols in place to make sure that our deans are being supported, that they're able to reach out, but that we're also touching base with them so that we can make sure that our students are being supported over the summer and that we can welcome them into the school year. Ms. Perry is doing something for the high school that's quite different. So I want to talk about our beginning of the year structures. Both middle schools this year will host similar sixth grade orientation activities for their families and students. I know that used to be like a real kind of hiccup that schools were doing things differently. They'll still have autonomy over how they do it. But as far as someone asking us like, what's the CHUH way? We're able to say, this is how we transition our students. Here is the activities that we hold, so that's important. Both middle schools will send staff to WEB training and that's for the upcoming school year. Superintendent Kirby was gracious enough to fund that for us. So we will be able to do that. And I think that's important. So if you're not familiar with WEB, it's where everybody belongs.
Right.
And it's where the eighth grade, sixth graders start off and they get a pal in eighth grade. What most people don't know is that by the time you get to eighth grade, you were a Webby at some point. And so it's really making sure that those students feel connected, they get to meet every month. Middle schools can be a little scary for sixth graders. And so just having that person, if you see them in the hall, they're not just this big body. You're like, that's my Webby. And so that's super important. And then on to Ms. Perry, Principal Perry. CHU, Cleveland Heights High School will host a five-day orientation event organized by Principal Perry for incoming eighth graders in August. It's actually August eighth and ninth. Sorry, it's going to take place the week of August fifth, but it's two days. So for example, Mr. Heinz, if he had students that were going through this, his students would come on H-Day. It'll be about a hundred students per day except for Friday. Friday is the big event. That's when all of the freshmen come together. She has invited staff, teach, like teachers, secretaries, everybody to help out. There's a lot of activities that they'll be able to do and she's also included parents. Bob has helped with that with gear up. So there's a huge connection of everything that's occurring so that we can make sure that we're not missing any students. Any questions at this time?
I'd love it if, if someone could send us those dates.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And get those on the calendar.
She'll actually send you an invite.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, that'd be lovely.
That would be great.
Yeah, to be able to pop into at least one of those would be really, really nice.
And put us to work when we do.
I will tell her too. She, she needs the help, so thank you.
She needs some bodies, let us know.
Yeah. Yeah, even, yeah, greeters or whatever.
Yep.
And I was particularly pleased with Ms. Perry being at both of the eighth grade promotion ceremonies and welcoming those eighth graders to heights high. And it's like, here we are, transition. You are no longer a middle school student.
Yeah, when she was announced, yeah, she was announced, there was like the little murmur over, you know, the kid section of like, oh, there she is.
Just for parents to see her face too. So, you know, saying like, oh, that's the ninth grade principal. And she's very aware of that. So I'm really happy that she was able to do that. And I don't want to miss my middle school principals. They also went to every elementary fifth grade promotion, which we laughed because the promotions were all held on, you guys know this.
They were all at ten o'clock on the same day.
They were all on the same day. And so what they did was have their support team go. So maybe a counselor went to one, but they were all at the same time. But it was really nice to see that connection from fifth grade to sixth grade and from eighth grade to ninth grade.
And it was really nice to have those eighth grade promotion ceremonies in the high school.
Yes.
And Ms. Perry being there.
It was really nice.
So it was, it was a way to get the kids already in the door and feeling comfortable with where they were going to be.
Families, some of those families, first time walking through.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So the number of times you answer the question, where's the bathroom at the high school? You're like, because everyone needs to know that.
Any questions, any other questions or comments? So Mr. Racinco is not here. I'm going to present his slides as is. I probably will not be able to answer a lot of questions. I don't want to do his presentation, any injustices by giving you wrong information. So he starts off with our PBIS tier fidelity inventory. We do have full implementation at several of our schools and approaching implementation at Boulevard Noble Elementary and Cleveland Heights High School. I do know that he and Shira Walton are working very hard to make sure that we have full implementation at all of our schools. The self-assessment survey is in place again at several schools and you can see the partially in place. And again, PBS is not a one-stop here. Like you, you have to continue to work towards it. Every year, you still need to apply for bronze or gold or silver status. Our fourth quarter performance indicator, KPI, is a fifteen percent decrease in discipline infractions, which we've already talked about for fighting and pre-fighting. We hope that you're able to see the connection between all of our different departments as we work towards that goal. And this includes our key indicator for a fifteen percent decrease in discipline resolutions. And Mrs. Byrd has already explained that it's not just out-of-school suspensions, it's out-of-school removals, which would include our emergency removals, expulsions or AEP. So we've worked really hard to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. And then there is a video for you to watch at your leisure for Roxborough Middle School. Following is our fourth quarter KPI PBIS data with the differences between the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kudos to the schools because we do have a decrease in some of our incidents. But again, that expulsion and AEP rate goes to what you were asking earlier. Are there some students or incidents where multiple days could lead to an increase in this? So depending on severity of the incident, you may see an increase in the number of days. And then you have a list of our PBIS district support, which really includes everybody sitting here at the table, but then also our PBIS behavior specialists. They have their monthly PBIS district meetings. We're starting to have principals now join those meetings because it's important that they be a part of that process. Coaching sessions with the state support team, Brian Callahan. He goes in a lot to our meetings and helps schools, the targeted PBIS support to building PBIS teams, just simply meaning that they can reach out to Racinco or Ms. Walton and say, hey, can you come to a meeting? We're kind of stuck on something. And they will help them. Professional development, the tier fidelity inventory. And I won't read all of those, but there's a lot of supports around PBIS for our schools. And then last but not least, here's the district's next steps with PBIS. The position for the intervention position was reduced due to ESAR. So we are working as a team to make sure that we're able to cover those areas. Simply means our principals will have to be a little bit more hands-on and our team members will follow suit in that support. Plan PBIS level of support for the upcoming school year by tiering schools' programs. So we'll look at where the schools are and use their data to determine what level of support they'll need and then develop a district-wide tiered support PBIS PD training plan for all school programs. So this will help kind of offset some of that work that Ms. Walton was doing. And if you have any questions for Mr. Racinco, I can jot them down and pass them along to him.
So the, the professional development training will be part of one of our regular PD days for the staff?
Yeah, PD day at the principal meetings. Sometimes they do a lot of it at a principal meeting and then it can travel on into the schools, but also the PD days that are planned for the district.
Okay. And we've had, the past few months, the PBIS video spotlights on what's happening in different buildings and that sort of, as we roll it out and get it expanded to everybody. And presumably next year, we'll get more videos from.
You guys like the videos? You want to continue to see those?
We agree.
Right, it's true because we get to, we get to know a little bit more about the people who are doing it too, which is helpful.
Not that we don't love hearing from you all, but.
All right, we want to thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I love that you're doing the exit surveys on the graduates after class is over. That's really good data.
That's super important. Oh, yeah, sorry.
The next item on our agenda is our budget presentation. So I believe this is Mr. Gainer and his sidekick.
Yes, it is all Mr. Saltis tonight, so.
All right, so you're the sidekick.
Let me get this, I'm the sidekick. So let me get this.
Are you presenting?
I will, yes.
Nice to see you, Eric.
Likewise. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, yes. Most of you have been through this process before. This will be the first time through for you, Phil, but.
Bring it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just wanted to introduce Eric and, and, you know, you know that, that a lot of, of his time is spent on this budget process. So he'll talk a little bit about the detail on how he does what he does. But just from the facilitation and the compilation, you know, and we talked previously about, you know, the account code structure and the three things and that kind of thing. There's really a lot of detail that goes into this particular process. And so, you know, with that, I'm just going to let Eric take it away and I'm going to run the slides.
Well, thank you and good evening, board members. Superintendent Kirby, Treasurer Gator, thank you certainly for the opportunity to be here this evening and present on this topic of the budget. And so with that, if you could roll into the next slide here. We, of course, want to reiterate the strategic plan as also was highlighted in the last presentation. We certainly want to make it a point that the finance department also works diligently to keep this as our main focus because we, you know, can sometimes get that perception that we just sit in the board office and twiddle our thumbs and just think about numbers all day, every day, which is certainly an important aspect of our job. However, we're not just here for only that reason, right? We, we've talked about a lot of great things, you know, here this evening and we feel that our role is to serve a specific role to, to help accomplish the things that we're trying to accomplish. And so we, as part of that, we make sure that, you know, each of the respective buildings and departments have the resources that they need in order to accomplish their goals. And so this evening, I want to highlight certainly those presentation topics there. Again, for those who don't know me, I'm Eric Saltis. I'm the assistant treasurer here. I certainly play a big part with Scott in the treasurer's office. And again, appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Feel free to ask any questions throughout the presentation. I'd be more than happy to address those as we, as we can. So this first topic here in the introduction, you know, we have a general fund accounting structure. And these are primarily the main thirteen areas, if we will, that we derive the entire general fund budget. And so any respective department or building falls into one of these main categories. So you've got salaries, benefits, building budgets, superintendent, student services, ed services, Board of Ed, human resources, which encompasses technology, finance, building operations, maintenance, transportation, communications and SFPR, which is really like your state deductions and so on and so forth. And so there's a lot of work, a lot of account line items, if you will, that fall underneath every single one of those. And it's important that we make sure that we have a well-defined structure for the, the main benefits, you know, that we have. You know, we talk about that as a line, or a point there to have these main categories. And there's four main benefits that I believe are a result of having a well-defined accounting structure. One is account reduction. And so when I first got here, almost five years ago now, believe it or not, there was an opportunity to restructure the accounting. And part of that was reducing the number of accounts to the tune of about seven thousand accounts or line items, if you will. So that was about forty percent at the time. And because of that, then the next benefit is focused account definition. And so having a focused account definition allows for clearer financial reporting. And so we understand that with the comprehension from the board financial reports, for example. We're able to provide you with those key, specific categories that align with those. 13 main areas that you see there at the top. Responsibility and accountability, uh, this allows for clear expectations within each of those respective areas as well. Sometimes we had confusion, maybe because of gray areas, uh, between certain areas and by cleaning up the accounting, if you will, allowed to reduce the amount of gray areas. So we did that through a number of conversations with, uh, the building and department leaders to, for me to get a better understanding, okay, who's responsible for what? And whose, uh, whose area needs to take this set of accounts, this set of accounts, and so on and so forth. And so it allowed for folks to have a better understanding of what their responsibility was as it related to the finances. And then the fourth, uh, benefit that I have listed here is it prompts communication and resolution. So when we run into any potential issues, we're able to find out about this on the front end and deal with them much more proactively as opposed to reactively. And so that's a, to me, a major benefit, uh, to be able to get ahead of any issues, uh, before they cause a lot more problems down the road. So we're able to have those conversations and, um, get ahead of it a little bit better. So we roll into the budget process, if you will. And there's five key areas that we've listed here. First, info being sent to the respective budget and department leaders. And then they're given a timeframe to, uh, complete that information. And so we allow them to take control of that and do that themselves. We could do that for them, but I don't think that any of the buildings want me to do that for them because if I'm being honest, I don't understand their goals and objectives that they have, and I don't understand all the dynamics that they have either. And so, uh, we simply offer the support in a way that, uh, if they've got questions or an understanding of the process that they need clarity on, we're there to help them throughout the process. Then we, once all of that information is received, uh, we have more of a, an internal review process, if you will, between myself, uh, and Scott, and then also ultimately, uh, with Liz, uh, as the superintendent, to understand, hey, is this, is this where we want to move forward, uh, ultimately? Once all of that has really been decided, uh, then we work to create this budget document resource that has been, uh, presented to you here this evening. And then ultimately, board approval of the temporary appropriations, if you will, which is just a fancy phrase for the budget. I will say that this process here certainly is a condensed process. I will reiterate that there are over 160 individual funds that we essentially oversee. So there is a lot of review, uh, as an, an understatement to everything that we're doing in the fiscal department. You know, I try to reiterate to folks that essentially we're running an $180 million operation, you know, give or take, right? It's a little bit, uh, less, you know, given, um, you know, where we were with what you're going to see at the culmination of this, um, presentation, but that's kind of, it, it gives the, the magnitude of what we do in our office. And speaking of the fiscal year 25 general fund budget document, so you have that there as a resource. Again, feel free to review that. That is essentially a starting point for the budget for next year. Again, it's an initial resource guide for you. In there, you will also notice that there are some remarks about the budget process, a little bit more so than what I've included just here this evening, as well as the timeline. You can also click on several of the resource links that highlight the applicable board policies and any Ohio revised code that speak to the budget process, deadlines, and so on and so forth. And of course, if you ever have any questions, you're more than willing to reach out to us and, and we can absolutely answer any questions that you might have. And this is just a sample, you know, within the budget document. And so this, uh, particular one is Delisle options. And what you're seeing essentially is the accounting structure with what's called a budget unit and account. And so again, this really gets into the weeds, of course, of the accounting, uh, but is, is to help you understand essentially what you're looking at in the respective budget document. And so the budget unit and account are defining specific accounting aspects, such as the department and the function, the building, or even the respective purpose as to what's being purchased, or what, in this case, is being budgeted for. Uh, in this case, you're seeing that, uh, kind of the top portion of codes have specify what Delisle options is, which is technically considered alternative instruction. And then you also have some principal services for some of the different needs that they have as well. And of course, the, there is a, a description that kind of outlines that, and then the respective budget amounts that they've applied for that respective line item.
For the record, I just want to call out the, uh, almost unfortunate, uh, uh, truncation of Delisle to deli. We're not spending $1,200 on deli food for one of our buildings.
Yes, gotta love the, uh.
Related supplies.
The limitations of software and so many characters you're allowed to, to input. But yes, deli it is. This next slide here is just simply a graphical depiction of the main areas that you'll see in the five-year forecast. So these should sound familiar, of course, with salaries and wages, benefits, purchase services, materials, capital outlay, transfers and advances. And so again, when you're looking at a five-year forecast, these are the main areas of expenditures that are lumped into those categories. So as to no surprise, you'll see that, uh, salaries, wages, and fringe benefits, uh, take up the vast majority of any respective district's general fund budget.
So that's 82.8% of our money goes to human beings.
Right.
And that's a very important number to remember.
Yes, we're a people business.
That's what we do.
Absolutely. So I know they're not, uh, listed there because they are such a small fraction of the respective budget, but for those who are curious, the capital outlay, which is really like your equipment, is 0.55%, and the transfers and advances are 0.39%. The next slide we have here is just, uh, regarding the five-year forecast, and there is a link to the forecast history that I know, uh, that Mr. Gainer has available, uh, often in his presentations. Here we have a, a snapshot, if you will, of the current five-year forecast, which is a condensed version, if you will, including the beginning cash balance, the total receipts anticipated or, or actually realized here in the first few years. The sum of the beginning cash balance and the total receipts, then expenditures, and then a, an ending cash balance there at the end. And so one thing, uh, that you can see that's kind of called out there, uh, with the, the green arrow, is the total fiscal year 25 expenditures of the $119,048,085. So this is next year's proposed budget for your, uh, consideration this evening.
I think it's also important to point out that we are in the longest levy cycle in anybody's memory. That, you know, one of the things that we committed to as a board was to move off of the every three-year, yeah, and to move off of the every three-year levy cycle that we had been on. And I think it's, you know, this is, this is the proof right here, that we have achieved that goal.
Probably since 9/20, right? Since the establishment of this funding system.
And we want to continue to keep that going, of course, right? You know, we, we know that it takes a lot of hard work and effort to, uh, continue to review that and make sound decisions, and that's not just the finance office, of course. That takes a lot of effort from a lot of folks across the district. And so, uh, we want to continue to keep that going, of course. And so as we get to one of the few final slides here, appropriations approval, we prepare the appropriations, or again, the budget, if you will, at the fund level. And so the document that you see outlines a number of different funds. You know, there's, uh, I think 25 to 30 different funds that we budget for, uh, at the district level. And so that's what we typically prepare that for board approval. And formally, this approval from the board establishes our spending authority. So without this approval, we really cannot move forward with any spending in the next fiscal year. So this is a formal stop, uh, step, excuse me. Uh, again, when you're looking at some of these board policies and ORC, um, this is where it's outlined that this is, uh, establishing the, uh, initial spending authority. And then from there, really, uh, some of the formal requirements that Scott has to do is sending this information to the county, the budget commission. And they essentially are serving as a, a checks and balances to what we're submitting and preparing for them, uh, making sure that what our plan is for our budget is not going to exceed the, uh, the resources that we have available to us or are expected to have available to us. So again, they serve as a checks and balances, uh, for us. I will say too, that the general fund figure, uh, matches the five-year forecast, of course, as well as the fiscal year 25 budget document. So all of that is consistent. And so again, I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and present. If there's any questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Eric, I have a, I guess it's less question, more comment, and maybe for, also for, for Scott and Liz and cabinet, just to maybe consider, and the board to consider. As I was looking over this, uh, in advance, I sort of was doing the back of the envelope math and looking at the, the, um, general fund on the per-building basis and kind of doing the calculation to kind of figure out, okay, we've got, here's like an elementary, uh, middle and high school kind of, uh, amount per pupil, uh, being spent, and then it kind of gets like, it seems to me, sort of like backed into these, um, these general fund budgets. Uh, so there's kind of like, here's the pot of money, and then how does each building want to spend theirs? I think as we deepen, uh, our equity work in the district, it would be interesting to consider and discuss, um, the possibility of, at the elementary school level especially, having a, a sliding scale of, of that amount per pupil, uh, depending on the, a, a number of factors, you know? Socioeconomic being probably the chief one to me that pops up, uh, uh, you know, an elementary school with, uh, lower socioeconomic status families attending or sending kids to that school might need more support than a higher one. And so I just think it would be an interesting thing to look at, uh, in terms of, uh, how we're supporting particularly, uh, the elementary schools.
Right now, each building leadership team starts from zero each year, right? I mean, that's what that first phase of your circle, right, of the five parts of the process was showing, that they start with their requests. And there's, doesn't seem to be any requirement that they zero out last year's budget to justify getting next year's budget, for example.
No, that's true, although we do, we do give them a guideline in terms of a, a dollar amount that, that Eric would provide, a per-pupil amount, as Phil calculated, um, at the elementary, middle and high school levels, based on the number of students in a per-pupil.
In each building.
Amount in each building. So they're at a zero-based budget, what do I need? And if their ask exceeds that allocation, that's when the review process that Eric talked about will go and.
Being able to justify that request.
Liz will say, you know, yes, that's, you know, something we need to open support. So kind of, it kind of gets to that a little bit, but I, I definitely take your point that we, you know, could see about weighting that and look at some best practices there. I'll also say, um, we do, you know, there are lots of supports that are provided to various buildings, um, in other ways, you know, through central office, through staffing, through title funds, um, through those kinds of things in order to kind of achieve a little bit of that as well, but understood.
Yes, because the general fund budget document does not hit on staffing, right? And there's a high-level number that's provided in terms of salaries and benefits, but not necessarily showing you, hey, how does it, how does it, um, compare between each of the respective buildings, kind of speaking more to your point. And so each of those respective budgets that you're seeing at the buildings are for non-salary and benefit costs, right? For the purchase services, supplies, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And I will also say too, that the, you know, between Scott and I, we're also trying to tie this back to the five-year forecast, right? In a sense that it's a, it's a starting guideline, you know, for discussion. Because we know that that is a tool that school districts use to review and potentially make decisions based off of, right? If we know that it's showing there's deficit spending over the next four years, and that could mean, uh, potentially going back on the ballot sooner, right? So we review that information in the five-year forecast context to help understand, okay, where are we at and what does it mean, or what could it mean, uh, as we move forward with potential decisions.
And I know some of the work that Nancy Pepler does, particularly the communities and schools work, has definitely been planned out where we start based on our equity work.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's, those programs are partnerships outside money, it's not coming out of general fund.
Yeah, but I'm even thinking.
There's a lot that doesn't show in this document, which is all the extras, right, that we're constantly trying to.
But again, yeah, to, to your point, you know, the general fund is one of those 160-plus funds that we manage.
Yeah, and, and what made me think of it was as I was looking through that and thinking about on a pure pupil, uh, spending basis, like when there's a line item for, you know, art supplies, do the families at, that are sending their kids to a certain building need more support when it comes to what supplies are getting sent on day one versus, uh, you know, another building? So just good for thought.
Any other question? You know, it's, it's, it's kind of a, an interesting thing because at this point, you know, so much that, that Eric has here and has presented and has worked on is, but as you said, you've, you've already approved 84% of the budget through all the staffing decisions that have been made along the way.
Eighty-two point eight.
Right, so all of the, all of the, you know, thousands of accounts that are tied just to this piece, you know, it just goes to show you the complexity of it and, and how much work is involved in just the non-salary stuff, let alone the, the, the stuff that you've already presented, um, been presented with along the way.
So can you explain what the state deductions budget means? Because that's one that I've never quite been able to wrap my head around.
Sure, we can absolutely provide a lot more details, you know, as it relates to that, because the, the state does have a number of deductions, if you will, that are really flow-through items that, um, you know, it's, I would say there's, um, goodness, like CTE, like we have a lot of funds that, of course, we're getting, you know, through, but then there's, um, you know, some deductions like our foundation, we've got SIRS and STIRS payments, et cetera, that are essentially deducted out of that. But yes, we can give you more detail on what exactly that is, what comes out of those, uh, respective budgets. I know you might have.
Because it looks like money in, but it's not really money in, it's money out.
No, this is truly only the expense side.
Right.
If you will. But like excess cost, catastrophic cost, you know, things like that, or tuition out, you know, for other respective districts, uh, things like that are just a few examples.
All the expenditures for the non-publics that pass through us where we're the fiscal agent.
And things like transportation, more than half of what we spend to bus students is busing students who are not ours.
Right, not CHH students.
Right.
So that would come through the state deductions line?
Some does.
Some does.
Some does, a lot of it comes straight, is strictly in the transfer, in the business ops section.
Right, purely it's an expense. It's an expense that we're spending our money transporting kids.
Yeah, it's kind of a strange thing, those, those state deductions, because, you know, as Eric said, you're, you know, you're receiving X, but then they're deducting Y. And so you have to budget that deduction, which in turn makes your budget look higher, even though you're really only ever getting the net of those two.
You know, and sometimes the state changes that, right? You may recall in the five-year forecast, there's lines for vouchers, right?
Well, there used to be some pretty ugly lines for vouchers.
Right, and so obviously they, they made a modification where districts aren't getting that funding and they aren't expending that either.
Right.
So when you remove that out, for example, it just looks like your staffing costs increase even more, right? So sometimes they're toying around, so to speak, with, with some of the formula that we just kind of have to go along with it. But yes, we can absolutely get you some more detail on what those are.
And then one other question, um, ESER funds are officially done as of the 30th
Esser funds are officially done as of the 30th of June, correct?
So, encumbrances, in other words, like your purchase orders are, you know, being cut off essentially at then, and then we have really a three-month timeframe that we're looking to expend out or liquidate the remaining funds.
So, that's why we have some, an Esser line for fiscal year '25? Because I was looking, it jumped out at me, and I thought, I thought we were done with that, why do we still have it?
Yes, so we anticipate.
Because we're not finished with the spending.
We anticipate those funds to be wrapped up July, if not August, at the latest.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question, but yeah, it's the runout of that.
Well, as the new guy, I just want to thank you both for how digestible you both make all this and all the hard work that goes into this. I look at numbers in my day job all day long, but almost none of them have a dollar sign in front of them, and so I'm really thankful for accountants. And, I mean, your ability to get answers when we ask them very, very quickly, particularly, I think because of that consolidation of all your funds and everything, I mean, it's really, really impressive, so, yeah, great job.
And I've seen a huge increase in the information that we receive and the way it's presented to us, it's improved in the six and a half years I've been on the board, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, it becomes so much easier to understand, so thank you.
You're welcome, glad to do it.
You know, I also just want to celebrate the fact that, Eric, you did a great job. Thank you for doing this, and it's been fun, I'm sure I speak for all of us, getting to know you and watching you really grow yourself as a professional. I think you really handled this presentation very, very well, and I appreciate the depth of knowledge that is sitting across the table from me. So, really, thank you and bravo.
Thank you.
I do just sort of want to say on the record that when it comes to Esser funds, and, you know, Jody mentioned it earlier, that, you know, we are in a long stretch between levies that we're all very proud of. I want to just sort of remind folks that that was the goal of the board at the time of the last levy, and that the record is clear, that we said many times that it was our goal to take that, that, was it a two- or three-year life expectancy levy?
It was a three-year, and we wanted to stretch it.
And we, our goal was to stretch it five years. And so, it wasn't this influx of money from Esser that allowed us to do that, it was very, very close, hard decision-making, stretching every dollar, that is what has made that possible. And, you know, we are fortunate to have an incredible team of administrators, and teachers, and bus drivers, and cafeteria workers, who really are the backbone of what we do, and who I really do believe care for every dollar that is spent. And they're the ones who I think, you know, it's our people, it is that 82% who are both our biggest expense and our, you know, our best asset. So, just wanted to remind the community that that was our goal from the very beginning, and I think that we are very proud of our, so far, ability to deliver on that. It's looking good.
It's looking good, absolutely.
So, you need to take action on the temporary appropriations.
We do, yes.
So, do I have a motion to consider the temporary appropriations for FY '25?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it?
I've already asked my questions and had answers, so I'm good.
I guess my only comment is maybe for one of your three things in the future. You can talk about the difference between we have calendar year, we have fiscal year, and we have school year.
So many years.
So many years.
Three years, one.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. Will do.
But if there's no other questions, then I will ask Mr. Gainer, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hines.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Are there any other comments before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I had the joy of visiting Cincinnati with our, with Nancy Pepler and her crew last Tuesday and Wednesday, and we visited the Euler School, which is, as folks sort of know, it's the gold standard of community and schools' wraparound services. And wow, it was a great trip. I feel like my brain still hasn't digested everything that I witnessed and learned. But I'm really grateful to have gone and to gotten to, to come to know her team a little bit better, and look forward to the work that we're doing, being known as another gold standard, not overtaking it, but, you know, it's one of those where there should be gold standards in every school district, because there's, the need is different in every school district. But a message that I came home with in particular, and I think that it is, it is important in what's happening in the noble community where much of our work is focused, is that at Euler, there's a really intentional economic development piece, that the school and the work is very much embedded in the economic health of the community. And I think that we all came back thinking, we can do more on those lines. And I think that, you know, hopefully, our partners in the city will be eager to meet us on that challenge. So, I was really, really glad to be able to take that trip.
I think I remember after approving Top of the Hill, being on the record saying, the next project I want you to bring us should be for the noble neighborhood, and I'm still waiting. So, just would love to see one.
The library stepped up.
The library, wow, that fun going to the opening.
That opening was wonderful, and the new space is terrific.
Yeah, just great. So fortunate to have a library.
So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Back end.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Mr. Hines.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, we are adjourned.
All right.